All right. Good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 AM and we are all here.
This conference will now be recorded.
So I will call the meeting to order at 9:00 AM. First up, we have a round of introductions. I'm Nancy Wise, Benton County Commissioner and Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Good morning. Zan Ojuro, Commissioner.
Good morning. Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Dan Stronig, County Council.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Danielle Brown, Behavioral Health Deputy Director. Sorry, Johann.
No worries.
Department.
Well, this happens. Johann Equity Diversity Inclusion Coordinator. He they pronouns.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Lynn McKee, Director of Benton County Naturaliares Parks and Events.
Morning, everyone. April Holland, Public Health Administrator.
I'm Nick Hurley. I'm the Chief of Corvallis Police Department. I'm a guest here this morning.
Hi, everybody. I'm just joining on. I'm also joining as a guest this morning. This is Kaylee Olson, the Communications Coordinator for the Health Department. She her pronouns.
Good morning, everyone. Rick Craig, your Chief Financial Officer.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming here and being with us today. Next up, we have announcements. I do not have any announcements. Are there any? Anyone else have an announcement? Seeing none. That will take us to comments from the public. If there is anyone who would like to share their comments with us, you can have up to three minutes. And I believe we'll take comments at this point for items that are not on the agenda. We might be anticipating some comments regarding the mask mandate or the, some of the J-SIP stuff. And if you'd like to make comments on those, we will ask for comments for those agenda items. So any comments from the public? Seeing none. We will move into the work session. First up, we have Core Team Six Month Review with Danielle Brown, Behavioral Health, and Chief Hurley, the Corvallis Police Department Chief of Police. Welcome.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. May I be made presenter, please?
Just one moment.
Thank you, Erica. So first, I wanted to say thank you for inviting us and allowing us to do our presentation today. This is something that we are really excited about and something that Chief Hurley and I have been working really hard on. I'm hoping you guys can see my screen and see it in presentation mode and not perfect. Okay, not in comment mode. So Chief, I'll let you take the lead on the, on the beginning, if you're okay with that?
Sure, sure. We can, we can do it like we did the other day. Apparently, we made the news as the dynamic duo that was quoted in the paper.
I did call worse, so.
That's what I said. I'm like, I'll take a dynamic duo comment. That was pretty cool. So good morning, everyone, Commissioners and County Administrators. It's, it's a pleasure to be here and represent the City Police Department. And really share some highlights and, and we'll try to keep it as high level and quick moving. I know you have a full agenda. But this is a really significant and important topic in law enforcement, as I know you all are aware. And Danielle and I, when I took over as Chief in 2020, she and I sat down and we realized we're really starting to see sort of an upward trend, which we're going to share with you. And, and we wanted to look at some different models that were out there. How are, how are agencies and, and government entities our size? That we don't have the metro dollars that everybody thinks we should or do in terms of like a cahoots model. And again, we'll get into this is not a cahoots. But we don't have those types of money. So we looked at Polk County, we looked at Washington County, we looked at Marion County, and we looked at sort of their collaborative response. And I have to tell you what an incredible relationship, partnership that Danielle and I have formed to see our staff take it to the next level. And that's what we all want is to say, hey, we've kind of, we work with WCJC Subcommittee on the Crisis Response and help the, really helped shape an idea of how the pilot project would look. And so I thank Commissioner Ojuro, who's chaired that Subcommittee this last eight, nine months, to really say, how best do we address these issues? Because it's not going away. And our staff members, we gave them the guidelines of what are really our program description was, which was that they needed to be able to respond to certain calls of service. They're not a, they're not a primary call for service team. And they really have to have the specialty training and the desire to serve in this capacity. And then there's a big emphasis on how do we support and intervene with these individuals who are experiencing sort of these acute mental health symptoms or emotional distress issues? And how do we help them best when it's maybe not necessarily criminal act? And then they came up with the name. So we'll get into the name, but we're pretty excited to see that they took, they took the energy and ran with it. Danielle.
And we, we wanted to talk about the mission the team has identified in, in their response in the community. And please forgive me because I'm just going to read this to you rather than try and paraphrase the words that they came up with. Our mission is Core utilizes a collaborative approach, providing trauma-informed compassionate care to individuals experiencing a mental health crisis, while ensuring the safety of responders, the individual in crisis, and the community. It was really important that we had a full picture view of this response and weren't just limiting to one of those three pillars of our program. In order to be effective, we want to make sure that everybody is getting the services that they need, staff are safe, and the community is safe in the process of the work that we're doing.
So these numbers that you see on the screen, these are Corvallis PD city calls for service. So when Danielle and I sat down, we looked at, we looked at County Sheriff's Office call, we looked at Philomath and City. We did not have state polices at the time, and OSUPD wasn't stood up yet. And so we really looked at the order of magnitude and realized that the, the concentration of calls and call volume right now, if we're going to try a pilot project centered in the city limits of Corvallis. So that's, that's where you see from 951 calls just four years ago to last year, in the 2021 calendar year, we, we hit 1,512 calls for service. Now, these calls can be anywhere from the word crisis was used in the, the computer aided dispatch that the person was in crisis, there was a crisis happening, to a mental health call, to a attempted suicide, any of the combination thereof. And so when we share that, it's all four years were searched in the same parameters to give you the, the apple to apple comparison. But what we realized is this number is just on this upward trend that we, we really need to get in front of in terms of how best can we, can we serve these folks if all we're doing is going out and either issuing a citation, or taking someone to jail, or taking them to the emergency department at Good Sam, when that may not be the absolute perfect fit. And, and I will note that we, as Danielle will also share, we've, we've really experienced a lot of increase in particular individuals who are chronic in terms of the number of times we deal with them and they come into the community. We deal with them significantly over, over a course of period of time. And so that number tends to spike a little bit in, in terms of their behavior. But what we found is that Core is now able to sort of focus some of their energies on helping that person out of whatever crisis they're in, whatever sort of state that they are in. They have the time and the resources. So we'll, we'll get into our, our team here so you understand where we're coming from.
So we thought it would be really important to put faces to names. These are the two staff that we, Chief Hurley and I identified to redirect to this work. And just as a reminder, we had made a decision not to hire new staff for this pilot project and really wanted to work with and redirect staff that we currently have on board to, to define this pilot project and really get the information that we were looking for. So Alyssa, and I'm going to say her last name wrong because I see it wrong every single time. Alyssa Giesbrecht is our QMHP that's assigned from the Health Department. Alyssa has great experience in working in this, in this world. She has a bachelor's in criminal justice, which fit right in with the core teamwork. And she has recently finished her master's in mental health counseling. So she is now our QMHP that's assigned to the team and has just jumped in with both feet in providing this level of support and service in the community. And I will let Chief talk a little bit about Trevor.
So, so like Danielle said, I chose someone who not only displayed a very deep understanding for an officer's background that we are not qualified mental health practitioners, we're not master level clinicians, that's just not our field. But I had, I have a couple officers and Trevor was the one that rose to the top for me at this point. He works up at Department of Public Safety Standards and Training as a mental health crisis response instructor for basic police classes for the whole state. Excuse me. He's a CIT training coordinator for our department already, where he was very heavily engaged with, with crisis intervention. And it was a natural fit for him to sort of help bring this core team to fruition. It's important to note that this is one team that we have on this pilot project to see how this is going to all work. So this is not a primary call for service entity. They don't, they don't get dispatched per se from the, from the building to go out to a call. They jump calls. They'll hear a call if they're on duty, but they're one team that's on 40 hours a work week. So I don't have a 24/7 coverage of a core team. So people can't call up and say, hey, I'd like the core team to respond. We're just not at that point. But what they do is they hear calls. If they're available, they'll go and take them. They may, they're doing a lot of follow-up, which we'll get into here in just a second, and part of their duties. But I think it's important to note that as a, as a pilot project, both Danielle and I have sort of peeled off folks from other assignments. Trevor's a Community Liveability Unit assigned officer, so he was working on a lot of other projects. But we felt this was such an important need to try a pilot to see, is it even viable for our community? So that, this is our, our core team. We're very proud of them. You see them out and about quite a bit. Alyssa's temporarily assigned over here to the Police Department's building where she, she's fit right in with, with the core team where her office is.
Sorry, it's taken a minute there. Maybe. Okay, there we go.
Technology. So.
Isn't it great?
Yeah. So the goal was really to prevent repeated crisis and reduce some emergency calls for service by providing some of the follow-up to subjects that maybe don't necessarily rise to the level that an officer on duty or a deputy could take someone to the hospital against their will, if you will. It's called a peace officer hold or a peace officer custody. And there are very specific parameters in Oregon law under the statute that allow a peace officer to take someone to the hospital against their will. So just merely downtown talking to themselves or, or acting what we would consider out of the norm may not necessarily rise to that level. And we get a lot of those calls for service from, from community members who are concerned about someone, which we 100% understand, and we will still go out there. But sometimes it's a big challenge to, to get them to engage with us. And I'll let Danielle kind of talk about that piece.
Yeah, I think one of the big challenges that we have in, in the mental health field, which I think most of you guys are probably familiar with, is the voluntary nature of our, of our mental health services. So, you know, we have, we do have some ability as the community mental health provider to take people into custody when they're dangerous to themselves or someone else. But we're really, really thoughtful about how and when we do that, because what we're doing is temporarily suspending, suspending someone's civil rights. So we want to make sure when we're doing that, that we're doing that as, as a last choice, that there are no other options for engaging this person. And what we found with the core team is that there's an opportunity to do a different type of engagement with people in the community. And, you know, maybe it's not the first or second or third time that Alyssa and Trevor are engaging with the person in the community that gets them to come in for services. Maybe it's the fifth. Or maybe it's the 15th. But, you know, having that opportunity to engage in a different way has really created a different treatment engagement model that is showing to be beneficial for our high-risk, high-needs population that we're interacting with multiple times in the community. The challenge with, with temporarily suspending someone's civil rights is it, it draws a pretty big line in the sand for services. You know, if you're taking someone into custody, the likelihood of them coming in voluntarily for services beyond that significantly decreases when, when you're taking someone against their will. So having this opportunity to engage in a different manner is really helpful. Having Alyssa as a mental health clinician have access to our electronic health records and be able to consult with treatment team and consult with other clinicians has also proved to be really, really beneficial with, with the population that this team is engaging with. You know, in a, in a traditional law enforcement response, law enforcement doesn't have access to diagnostic information and treatment teams. We're really thoughtful about HIPAA and not sharing that information, but Alyssa being able to look at that and coming in and engaging with the person with a full picture idea of what's going on with the individual at any given time is really helpful and engaging in a way that's both therapeutic and trauma-informed. So we make sure that we're not inadvertently causing trauma for someone who already likely has a trauma response related to their experiences in the community.
The, the four tenants being for the crisis, but then the outreach response and engage. What, what we did was we looked at the July 1 to December 31, 2021, six-month call window for Corvallis PD. It's 777 calls that were responded to by CBD Patrol that involve some level of mental health crisis response. And of that, I think the important piece is to understand that not all calls, like we said, an officer can just take someone to the hospital and be done with them. And so what we found was that the, the core team were able to do a lot of follow-up. So they go out and they find these folks later. And so you see from this, this informational slide in terms of a breakdown on what calls they handled or did follow-up on. They were able to go out and assist officers 55% of the time. They were able to, to provide different resources or do what we call the warm handoff per se to a different provider. Things that, like Alyssa has available or her resource network is, is different than ours in law enforcement. We had 26% of those folks who just flat out refused any type of service. And that's a challenge for both the community, where we have some neighborhoods right now with some residents in the neighborhoods that are quite challenging to the neighborhood. And they look at us for help and we're sort of, we have to work within the confines of the statute and the resources available. And it is a challenge. And we recognize that. The last resort was, is an arrest if, if need be. If it's a criminal act, in the 1% case in the six months, it was a criminal act that was, that was, the subject was a part of, and that person did end up going to jail. But only 3% of those ended up at the hospital. So that was a, that was a significant reduction that we're starting to see from the emergency department. So we're looking forward to the one year where the Subcommittee can look at everybody's data again, because Commissioner Ojuro had us, we all brought our data to start and really started looking at the impact. Our, our piece of the puzzle played in terms of other peoples. And it was kind of an eye-opener to see that. But again, lack of resources in our community has been a, a big challenge. And Danielle, if you want to talk a little bit about the Resource Center.
Yep. Yeah, I think as we move forward with developing this continuum of care here in Benton County, the Crisis Center is going to, going to fill a pretty significant gap in the services that we have available here in Benton County. Right now, when law enforcement or EMTs or behavioral health clinicians are engaging with someone in the community, they really have two options. They can either bring, leave the person in the community or bring them or get them to the emergency department. The Crisis Center that we're in the process of developing will fill a gap where there's a voluntary option for folks who needs mental health stabilization in the community, but don't really need the level of intensive services that the hospital provides or the security that the hospital provides. When we looked at data for 2019, we found that about 65% of the admissions into the Good Samaritan psychiatric unit were voluntary. And, you know, having an alternative for people who are voluntary to, to go to a least, a lesser restrictive level of care will open resources for people that really do need the hospitalization. We want to make sure we're using the resources for people that actually need them. There is a time and place for people to be accessing the, the inpatient unit at Good Samaritan, but having 65% of those individuals be voluntary tells me as a clinician that they likely could be, could be stabilized in a lower level of care. And the Crisis Unit, the Crisis Center will provide that alternative level of care. It will also allow law enforcement, EMTs, first responders, when they're engaging with someone in the community, and maybe the person doesn't quite rise to the level of needing a peace officer custody to say, hey, Joe or Sally, you know, why don't we go to the Crisis Center and see what they can do to help support you? You know, maybe some people just need a place for a timeout. Maybe they're stressors in their home environment, and the Crisis Center will be able to fill that niche, which is a service we just don't have right now. So that will also further improve the, the continuum of care and system that we have developed, are developing here in Benton County.
And the last piece is the engagement piece that our staff, this core team has been working really hard on. My goal as the chief was that I would have 100% of my patrol staff CIT certified. So they've been through the 40-hour intensive crisis intervention team training, which is not taught by law enforcement. It is taught by clinicians, it's taught by professionals from the, from the mental health field and crisis field in, in a different lens, if you will. It's become the national model. And right now, I have about 66% of my field staff currently trained and certified, which is a huge number locally and statewide, actually. We're working with the Sheriff's Office, Albany PD, OSUPD, Philomath. We've gotten about 130 through this class, and that's part of what Alyssa and Trevor have been working on is coordinating. And there was a picture earlier of, of them in that class where we had a significant number of folks attend that hadn't yet had this type of model training in terms of how we respond to folks in crisis. So what we're really starting to see is, is an increase in understanding that there is a difference when we, when we respond to these mental health crisis calls that we hadn't trained 20 years ago in law enforcement. So it's, it's a shift in, in our profession, if you will.
Yeah, I'll also add, if I may, Chief, that the 66% of CPD officers that are trained was with a two-year pause for COVID. These classes are in person. There's no, because of the intensity of the 40-hour training, there's no way to do it virtually. So we hadn't been able to do a CIT class. I think the last one we did was right before COVID. I want to say January of 2020. And then we did have one at the very end of last year finally again. So that number would be higher had COVID not happened, and those been on a hiatus for about 20 months. And Trevor and Alyssa do a fantastic job of coordinating the CIT training and all of the trainers to come in. The last class we had, we had folks from Deschutes County, Lane County, Lebanon PD. It was a really wide variety of participants, which is great.
In fact, they've, they've been so successful that DPSST in Salem, so the state agency that oversees all law enforcement, public safety training, they've selected this location in Corvallis for the region to host the first ever advanced CIT, which will be this month. And it's, it's a pilot, pilot class that is even more intense. You have to have had already the 40-hour CIT class. So we're really honored that they're recognizing the work that our core team has been doing. Again, we're modeling, we haven't, we haven't created the wheel. We're, we're sort of modeling it after other agencies and similar models. But we're, we're starting to see this success of the engagement piece. And so we're pretty honored to be, to be the area selected to, to host this advanced CIT.
Which I will give Officer Anderson and Alyssa all the credit in the world for that. That really is their work.
Absolutely. They make us look good, right, Danielle?
Indeed, they do. So I think, you know, the one thing we wanted to say is that this collaboration has been amazing. We've had some tremendous opportunities with this work. And, and I really look forward to continuing this really fundamental work in the mental health world and, and trying to, to address these needs in a much different way.
Relationships are primary. Everything else is secondary. And the fact that Danielle and I reached across the table and said, let's work together on this to figure out how can we do the right work with the limited budgets that we all have? It's, it's not a, it's not a secret. It's not a makeup. It's, it's the reality. The issue is going to be what we do when this one-year pilot project's up and, and how do we move forward? And I'm trying to figure out in my budget how I can make that happen from the city side, because the patrol is starting to see a difference when they can, they can ask Core to come out and help them on a, on a specific individual who takes up a lot more time. Sometimes it's just the time that it takes where the calls for service are still coming in and the, the on-duty officers are needing to respond to those. And the core team is not attached to that. So they are able to just literally say, I'm taking this next hour if I need be, or whatever the time is required to engage with this person in crisis a little bit deeper and hopefully get them maybe to some different resources that in the past has not been, been done. And that's our whole goal is to work ourselves out of a job, if you will, when it comes to the recidivism of some of our folks that are experiencing. when it comes to the recidivism of some of our folks that are experiencing that. And again, this is a community team. So this is not a, they're, they're not just dealing with a specific population of people in our community. They've been to houses, apartments, hotels, fraternities, they've been to houseless camps. It is all encompassing for our community. And sometimes I think I want to get ahead of that question because it comes up a lot that this is not a cahoots model. This is not a street outreach response team. Those are wonderful programs and they have their place, but this is not the same thing. And that we're sending out trained professionals for a very specific purpose. And again, not, not downplaying sort or cahoots, but they are different models and different program services. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or Danielle?
Thank you, Commissioner Ogero, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Chair Weiss. And I really appreciate the report from Chief Hurley and from Danielle. This is an exciting program. I'm happy that we've got six months of good work under our belts. But I do know that it's budget season for the city of Corvallis and so you're making plans for the next fiscal year. What are the aspirations of the team in terms of going beyond the pilot?
Well, you are correct, Commissioner. We are in the throes of the start of budget season and I have, I have worked with my boss, the city manager, in terms of how I'm, I'm working towards maybe getting additional funding. But that all plays into all the other departments and their asks. I am at the point now that I know the significance of the work and the importance of the work cannot just not happen because I don't, don't get allotted any extra budget dollars. So what I'm looking at is, is how I will have to shift some folks around potentially because the commitment from Danielle has been, she wants to continue as well. I think if the six months shows us anything, it's that working together, we are going further and getting better, better results for the community members, especially the ones that are in this vulnerable state. So again, budgets being what they are, I will have to figure out something within the internal if I'm not granted some additional funding. But I, I can't believe the amount of work that these two have done. It's just, it's just phenomenal, the energy, the positivity. Danielle and I gave them a big ask, said, help us set up this program. Here's our, here's our vision, you guys help us make it happen. And they did. And so I'm very, I'm very proud and impressed to be a part of their team. But it's, it's going to be figuring out the harder part for the future.
I do have a quick follow up. In the twenty, we are in twenty, in the twenty twenty one legislative session, figure out which year. I, there was funding approved for co-response teams or for cahoot style teams. And that money was to flow through the Oregon Health Authority. Is there any word about the status of those funds and whether or not they could be helpful in solidifying and expanding the core team?
Yeah, we're still waiting on Oregon Health Authority to determine how they're going to roll those funds out. They are intending to roll them out likely in either an RFA or an RFP process. And we're hoping that that will help support the core team. What I'm unclear about is whether or not that funding can be used to help support the law enforcement side of the team. That has not been made at all clear.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to learning the answer to that.
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, really glad to get the information about the program. I knew it was out there, but hadn't got many specifics. You've used a couple of my favorite words, collaborate, figure out who should be on the team and then design a program. So really glad to get this update. Our son in laws was a Lincoln County deputy and he had a story about midnight, he was patrolling south of the county, south of Newport. And a guy was walking down the middle of the highway. And so picked him up to, to ensure his own safety. And then back towards Newport and calls the Good Sam in Newport. And I think they had two beds for mental health issues and they were both full. And so he gets to take the guy to the jail because that was the other option. And that story is stuck with me, just that, the, what did you say? Continuum of care and the, the old model had huge gaps in it. And so I'm looking forward to more information, how this is playing out. And probably like any program, needs adjusting here and there. An obvious one is more hours than eight to five during the week. But you have to start somewhere. And so congratulations on getting it this far. And part of that continuum of care is better use of our resources. And that, so hopefully some of these budget questions can get answered like, like they should and figure out how to expand the program because there's, there is an obvious need. So congratulations on, looks like good design and good rollout. And Chief Hurley, you mentioned, I think this is a one year pilot program and then figure out what comes next, is that correct?
That's correct. Right now it's, we wanted to see if this was even a viable model for our community. Again, if we just threw a bunch of things at one thing and thought, well, this is what it's going to be and it doesn't work, it would have been such an energy suck and a money suck. So we said, let's, let's give it a year pilot project and see, is this viable? Does this work? Again, our, our community being about a hundred thousand ish for the countywide, obviously our budgets match that. So we don't have the Portland money or the Eugene Springfield metro type dollars. We really wanted to see, is this model that we're envisioning and the subcommittee that helped us, is that really going to work? And what we're seeing is by and large, yes, but we do need a little bit more spread of hours. And again, we started with the day shift, eight to five because of services. And it worked well for, for just getting it up and running. And now we're starting to look at the, the time data as well to determine, is it, is a swing shift and a day shift better? Again, at two in the morning, we, our call volume obviously drops down. But there is a need, you know, sometimes in the later evenings that our day shift folks of the core team has already gone to cure for the night. So we're looking at all those, those points. But thank you.
And when, I will also add, when Chief Hurley and I started talking about this about two years ago, year and a half ago, what we found is that we had the data on the call number, but we didn't have any other data. So we wanted to use this pilot project to really define what that data set looked like and really be able to make a well-informed decision on programming. So that's, when we were talking, that's why we designed the one year pilot. We felt like that was, that one year would be long enough to collect data across the services that we're providing and be able to inform city and county leadership about what we needed moving forward. We didn't want to just come in and say, well, we think this might work, we don't really know because we knew that that wouldn't be well received. So having this pilot project to really inform all of those decisions was very important to both of us in order to bring it to city and county leadership as a, as a viable response.
Great, thank you. And hopefully we'll continue to get good news on funding for the Respite Center and get that part of the program going. So thanks for the report.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have a clarifying question. I apologize if you said this and I just missed it. But you were talking about the peace officer custody and three percent of the calls resulted in transports to the hospital. I was just curious, are those transports to the hospital, were those people who are willing to go, unwilling to go, or a combination thereof?
The, okay, so good question, Commissioner. The, the call team, the core team's dispositions on, on the calls that we shared, the three percent, those were based on the calls that they went out and dealt with. So I'm just pulling up my notes here to make sure I'm, I'm on the right page. Those were peace officer custody. So those were not an agreeable person that wanted to go per se, but they didn't have a choice. The three percent, so they did seventy, those were seventy three total calls for service that our core team specifically responded to that we looked at. And they were the direct people that responded out of the, out of our seven hundred and seventy seven calls, that six month window. I think I missed that, so I appreciate you bringing that back up. It was seventy three total calls that they directly responded to. And then they had two hundred and sixty eight that they reviewed. So maybe it was three in the morning that patrol dealt with a person and they didn't rise to the level of POC. So then what happened was the core team would get that report through our crime analyst every morning and they would review it and decide, is that something that we need to follow up on? Is that someone we're aware of? Sometimes as Danielle was saying, it's, it's voluntary involvement in your, in your mental health therapy. And we get a lot of times that we're told to leave. And then every now and then you get that person that is a little more curious. Now there's a little more trust built up and that's where they had some services that were actually offered and received by the, by the subject. So yeah, they did end up taking a couple of people to the hospital, the, the core team themselves on a POC or peace officer custody. And then they did have the one that they took to jail based on the, the call. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Danielle or Chief Hurley? Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, you answered one, the POC acronym. And the term community policing has been around for quite a while. And maybe we need a, a new term for what you folks here are doing on the core program. But it's, like I said, really happy to get the six month review and looking forward to good news going forward. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? Thank you so much, Danielle and Chief Hurley. We really appreciate you and all the great work that your team has done. Please pass along our thanks to your team.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to present this morning.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have our COVID Department Operations Center's update with Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. As you know, the landscape's been changing rather rapidly, more so than usual lately with COVID news. And as you all are aware, yesterday it changed once again. So today's update is very timely and April has been preparing pretty much every moment of the day for these updates. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you, Suzanne, and good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Yes, the, there's so much happening in the COVID landscape right now. And, you know, before I, I make my comments, I want to make a brief acknowledgement. I want to acknowledge that there are few things worse for public health than war. And many of us may be feeling distracted and distraught. I want to express heartfelt sympathy, grief and concern to all people, all people experiencing displacement, fear, threat and conflict at this time. So I'm going to start with a COVID nineteen update. And then I think the, the comments that follow will naturally go into the, the next agenda item, which will be a discussion of the, the local masking requirement. So I'm going to jump right in. The pandemic situation continues to improve here in Benton County. Cases decreased twenty six percent last week compared to the week before with a total of a hundred seventy two cases reported the week of February twentieth. This corresponds with a seven day rate of a hundred eighty two cases per a hundred thousand people. We also saw improvement in our, our testing positivity rate, which was down to five percent. That's really where we love to see it, is five percent or lower. These figures are very close to those that we saw the week of December nineteenth, which was our first week of elevated cases with the Omicron surge. Hospitalizations are decreasing rapidly statewide. Yesterday, there were four hundred seventy nine people hospitalized with COVID nineteen. And at the peak of Omicron, there were eleven hundred thirty. So really, really quick decreases seen in hospitalizations all around. The hospitals in our region, Region Two, which includes Lynn, Benton, Lincoln, Marion, Polk and Yam Hill Counties are also seeing decreases with one hundred thirteen hospitalized yesterday in the region, down from two oh five to a hundred five at the peak of the surge. And here at Good Samaritan Regional Medical Center, twelve individuals were hospitalized with COVID nineteen yesterday. This is nice to see is the average number of daily hospitalizations over the last four weeks were roughly about nineteen a day. Of course, there is fluctuation with the, with the smaller hospital, we could see higher numbers. However, we're headed in the right direction. And in the Delta surge at our local hospital, hospitalizations reached as high as twenty nine in a given day. Now onto the big changes that we've, we've seen. On Friday, a few days ago, OHA announced a change to the date that the state indoor masking order will be lifted to March nineteenth. Then yesterday, the Western states governors made a joint announcement stating that the date for all three states, California, Washington and Oregon, will be in alignment to remove the masking order on March twelfth. These changes include the removal of required masking in K through twelve settings as well as in the public, in the general public. Also on Friday, CDC announced a new metric based system to weigh COVID nineteen risk in a given community. It's called COVID nineteen community levels. And this is a new tool to help individuals and communities to decide what prevention steps to take based on the latest data and their local context and, and unique needs. The levels include low, medium and high. They're determined, they're rooted in hospital beds being used and hospital admissions, but they also incorporate the new number of COVID nineteen cases in an area. Locally, you know, we're all, we also will look at community vaccination coverage and other local information, including wastewater surveillance, et cetera, to inform decision making here at the local level. So the CDC COVID nineteen community levels will be updated every Thursday. Unfortunately, it won't be as straightforward for public health to accurately pinpoint or forecast what the level will be on a Thursday. This is, this is due to many factors, including when the CDC data is pulled, the way the hospital capacity and admissions are allocated to the counties from metropolitan statistical areas. We just don't have the background information to be able to track alongside like we could with cases and, and positivity rate. We will have a pretty good guess though, and I think we'll find ourselves in the medium level on Thursday. But don't hold me to that. And then, you know, of course, we in public health will continue to review all the data available to help inform the community. Overall, you know, we're finding ourselves in a time of huge change. First, we're coming down from this enormous surge. Omicron is a strikingly transmissible strain. A lot of people have been infected, including a lot who haven't been counted. And many who were exposed and didn't get infected largely thanks to vaccination and a recent booster. OHA modeling shows that at this time, just about fourteen percent of Oregonians are susceptible to infection at just about 14% of Oregonians are susceptible to infection at this time due to immunity from vaccination or recent infection. In this unique moment, our collective level of risk is lower and will be lower for some amount of time. We know that masking is an important layer of protection, and community-wide indoor masking is an effective way to reduce transmission in a surge. When cases are very high, it's incredibly important that everyone come together to slow transmission and protect our most vulnerable citizens and our healthcare infrastructure. We need all those layers in place. So statewide and perhaps locally, masks may no longer be required soon, but masking will not be over. Many will continue to mask to protect themselves and others. We are not all going to move at the same rate toward the shift out of crisis mode that, that we've been witnessing. We all have different experiences that shape our lives, different risks, and a different set of circumstances that we face day to day. During the past few years, we've grown very accustomed to making decisions based on the risks involved, and we should continue to move forward with those risks in mind. Those who are immunocompromised, have underlying health conditions, are age 65 and older, or are unvaccinated, are recommended to continue wearing masks in indoor public spaces. Those with vulnerable loved ones can help protect them by continuing to wear masks in indoor spaces. In an environment without required indoor masking, we must continue to protect the vulnerable, and we can, we can do this by providing high-quality masking that can be effective in an environment where not everyone else is masked, by continuing to ensure appropriate outreach and access to vaccination, by maintaining precautions for staff and visitors at long-term care facilities, continuing universal masking in healthcare settings, and ensuring availability and access to therapeutics. And in the future, cases will likely ebb and flow. It's our job here in public health to have a pulse on what is happening and what may be coming, to share information with our communities, and to be there with data to help support decision-making. I've been asked a lot, will we ever, you know, if, if, if universal masking is removed, will we ever need to apply it again? And I, I don't think that it would be wise to take it off the table as a possibility. Increases in community transmission of COVID-19 are concerning, as they can disrupt lives, result in extended illness, cause stress, and place a burden on our healthcare system. If a new variant emerges that spreads quickly and causes more severe disease, or significantly reduces effectiveness of, of our current vaccines, state and local health officials will, will need to review the impact on communities and consider options, including masking requirements. Overall, I want to, I want everyone to know that we're not powerless against COVID-19 in an environment without universal masking, and our risk decreases with lower community transmission. We have protective vaccines, therapeutics, testing, and a supply of high-quality masks that offer protection to those who need or want it. We should also continue to improve ventilation, practice good hand hygiene, and stay home when sick. We're likely to see more changes in guidance as we continue to move through this, this new landscape. We've been in discussion with partners, including Oregon State University, Samaritan Health Services, and schools, to ensure that messaging is aligned. Some themes include that COVID isn't, isn't going away, COVID isn't over, and neither is masking. We need to have support and normalization for masking, and we need the ears to, to, to stay open, to, to be open, to, to take it back up if it's discontinued when needed. And then, you know, use of the CDC guidance and each person's circumstances to guide activities and, and their level of protection that they need. And then, third, ensuring the protection of vulnerable community members, as I mentioned earlier. Those are my key points, and I'm, I'm happy to take any questions, and yeah, I hear your thoughts, Commissioners, thanks.
Thank you, and I'll just clarify real quick that the discussion regarding the indoor mask mandate is our next agenda item. You know, it can be kind of confusing here. Commissioner Ogierow, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. April, I guess my biggest question right now is about the availability of therapeutics. I have not heard very much locally about availability. Most of the news on that front seems to come from the national level and from other communities, so. Given that there is a component of our communities that's still quite vulnerable, what is the availability of those therapeutics here locally?
Thank you, that's, that's an incredibly important consideration, Commissioner Ogierow. In my conversations with, with our, with our local hospital, it, it's been, it's been shared with me that the therapeutics are available and on the shelf. It's anticipated that as the next, as, as time goes on, there will be more and more availability of these. In fact, at, at this time, we may have a slight underutilization of some of the therapeutics, and so there's been some outreach to providers to ensure that they are connecting people with those services as needed. So at this time, we're not, we're not at a scarcity with them, but we soon should have much more.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
Commissioner Malone?
Weiss, good morning, April, and I really appreciate, look forward to your reports, and the last few days have, I'm sure have been a challenge to try to, try to keep up, but I think you, you have. And I, I think it's really important, what you went over about some of the lessons that we've learned from COVID, and then that we can apply going forward. Haven't heard much discussion of, I guess, the flu season that we're just coming out of, but like last year, I assume it was fairly light, very light compared to normal, and a lot of that can be, I, I assume a lot of that can be attributed to our caution with, with COVID, but it, it shows that staying home when you're sick and the other things that you've mentioned, and need to be emphasized going forward in our messaging, that we, we can keep our community healthier by some of the lessons that we've are hard-won lessons that we've learned through the two years of COVID. One report that I heard recently was COVID going forward and masking and some of the other things we do to try to keep it down to a dull roar is, think of masks and some of those other things are like an umbrella, and, and you don't need an umbrella every day, but with with the new metrics, hopefully they'll get clearer what, what they mean. That right now, it's, it's a sunny day, and you don't need your, your mask, your umbrella, but have it handy, just, just in case, so I, I do look forward to every time new metrics are rolled out, it takes a little while to get the word around, and oh, what is this, what does this really mean for me, but really appreciate your, your tracking on this, and your thoughtful and clear reports.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions or comments for Suzanne and April? All right, hearing none, thank you very much, April, and Suzanne, we appreciate you coming and updating us with that. We are now going to take a quick break, we will come back at 10:01, and we will be moving on to the discussion regarding indoor mask mandate, and we will take public comment first up. I will have Linda Spain, and if anyone else would like to comment, please put your name in the chat, and we will see everyone back at 10:04. All right, well, it is 10:04, which brings us to our agenda item 4.3, discussion regarding indoor mask mandate. And Linda, I have you up first for commenting, welcome and thank you for joining us. And I will set a timer for three minutes. Go ahead and start. Oh, I can't hear you, Linda.
Linda, the best solution might be to dial in on your telephone, so that you can have that speaker available. Maybe we can switch the order, Commissioner Weiss.
Looks like she's plugging in a headset.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, Linda.
Maybe this, well, would this work better? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
We can hear you.
Great, great, thank you very much. So this has been a tough couple of years, of course, for everyone. For me, as a faculty member at For me as a faculty member at L B C C trying to teach online and over Zoom. But more importantly, as a part owner of Pack Mail franchise in the Timber Hill Shopping Center, my son and I own that business. And this has been extremely difficult. They are, as a shipping mailing thing, they are essential workers. So while most of us were snug at home at the beginning, they were out there not knowing if the package from China would get them sick or the, they, they would get germs from the credit card reader. And then came the masks and these people have been wearing masks eight to nine hours a day, not just occasionally when you went to the grocery store, but all day, every day, doing hard work in masks. And sometimes trying to coordinate referee between customers, unmasked and masked customers who wanted to argue about that in the middle of the store. So this has been really tough for these people. Then there was some hope that the mask mandate is going to be lifted. And the data circled on the calendar. They're very excited that maybe this finally is going to end. And then we read in the paper that maybe Benton County, well out of abundance of caution, decide to extend it for Benton County. And this is really discouraging for people who make 12 bucks an hour. They don't have much power. And here they are set up against maybe who knows when, how long this would last. I would suggest that you issue a statement respecting the grown up common sense of the people in Benton County who are overwhelmingly vaccinated and taking care of things to use masks when they need them and to give them some freedom. The other thing as far as businesses in this county are concerned is there is another option 10 miles away, which will not, where people will not be masked. And business, customers may choose that to have a little more freedom in that. So I think you need to consider the businesses of Benton County when you make your determination about continuing a mask mandate in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next up, we have Steve Clark. Welcome, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you very much for the opportunity to share briefly the position of Oregon State University. University is strongly in support of Benton County joining with O H A and the states of Oregon, Washington, and California in ending mask mandates effective the evening of March 11. We believe that there is an opportunity for us to progress in our efforts as a community, as a state, as a nation and world in addressing the pandemic without masks as a requirement. Within the university, we are prepared to provide both communication and education and collaboration with Benton County Health Department, Samaritan Health Services, and others throughout Benton County to contribute to both awareness and, and knowledge about how we can progress. Quite simply, we believe that masks should be welcome but not required. And that we are prepared to work with April Holland, Suzanne, and others to share the responsibility for both clearly in, in communicating and educating all of us within Benton County as to how we might contribute to wellness going forward. We do believe we should continue to promote the use of masks for those at higher risk or in certain situations such as medical care facilities, emphasize the importance of being vaccinated and boosted, using proper masks and 95s and KN 95s. And really, as a community, support a culture of care, not only within the university community, but a culture of care among all those who live and work in Benton County, that this is a personal choice to wear a mask, but an informed choice nonetheless. Thank you very much. And we continue to support the collaboration the county has extended throughout the pandemic.
Thank you, Steve. Would anyone else like to comment?
Good afternoon. May I provide public comment, please?
Sure. Could you please state your name?
Sure. Hello, my name is Michelle Steinhamel. I'm the Public Information Officer for Greater Albany Public Schools. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comments. I just, as a representative of Greater Albany Public Schools, want to encourage the board to move to a mask option, or the Commissioners to move to a mask optional situation. As you know, Greater Albany Public Schools, of course, has schools also in Benton County across the river. And we're really in a, a unique situation here where, you know, even families that have kids in, in North Albany, and then maybe a child at the high school are left in different situations where one child may be masking, another child maybe not, based on the river, really. So our hope is that the Commissioners will consider making those, that masks optional. As our understanding is, excuse me, from Lynn County, that this is something that they are going to allow our district to do. So we take, of course, our, the safety of our students very seriously. But we also want to make sure that our students have the very best educational experience. And at this point, we support moving to masks optional for all of our students within the Gap School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment at this time? Hearing none? All right, let's see. Vance, it looks like you're up.
Thanks, Commissioner Weiss. I guess just to set the stage for your, for your discussion. The primary reason we have this on the agenda is because Benton County's order that mandates masks be worn indoors technically has no expiration date. It is implied that the indoor mask mandate as ordered by Benton County months ago would expire at the time Benton County's emergency declaration expires. Currently, that expiration is scheduled for March 31st. So April, you might want to circle that on your calendar for a conversation in the next couple of weeks. But what that does is it puts us at, not cross purposes with the state, but it creates the potential for Benton County to be out of alignment with the state. And as the board is well aware, Benton County has been very diligent about tracking in parallel with the state of Oregon throughout the pandemic. I think it has created a, a, a high degree of certainty and confidence in the public that what Benton County is doing is what the state is, is ordering. So at this juncture, the question that is being posed to the board is how do you wish to deal with Benton County's mask mandate, which currently has no expiration date in, in the face of the state's determination that indoor mask mandates be lifted effective March 12? And I'm just gonna, just gonna clarify what Steve said, and not in the evening of the 11th, but at midnight on the 11th, 12. So what I had suggested to the board when I threw out a discussion point last week is that there's a couple of different ways you can, you can go. Perhaps the easiest would be to direct staff to return with an order setting an expiration date for your indoor mask mandate at a date of your choosing, if that's the direction you go. We have another board meeting next Tuesday that, at which time an order could be considered, which would then be in place just in front of the state's timeline. Happy to answer any questions or certainly invite April Holland to, to, to weigh in. This is really her bailiwick. My, my involvement is merely trying to let you know about the status of our order vis a vis the state's recent communication.
Commissioner Ojro, you got a question? Never mind. April, go ahead and I will speak after you have spoken.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Vance. Yes, Vance, you are absolutely our, our expert in how, on the how to do it and the, and the options for, for the Commissioners to, to move forward. We did further discuss a possibility of amending the order or, or discontinuing the order as well. We know that the state of Oregon is going to cease its emergency declaration on April 1st. So, so the, the options, as I see them, and please correct me if I'm wrong, are to adjust the current declaration to, to maybe change the language from masks required to an, and, an encouragement or recommendation for certain groups to continue masking. And with the current expiration date of March 31st, or to discontinue the order altogether. Am I missing something in that, Vance?
I, I think one thing that's missing a little bit is there's a combination as well. You could issue a new order that rescinds our current mask mandate order that sets a, that establishes a end date for indoor mask mandate while at the same time, as, as April referenced, recommending continued indoor mask usage by, for those individuals who feel it is appropriate or have health reasons that might, might warrant that consideration.
Commissioner Ojro? Thank you. I think I find myself a little bit more confused after that, Vance, than I was before. Given our, our current emergency order, we, we have, we have two, we have two decisions to make. Whether to drop that in tandem with the state at the end of the month when ours expires, or to continue our local emergency order and in that order to shift the masking requirement to a recommendation for those vulnerable populations. So I, I guess, is that correct, first of all?
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm sorry, I, I never mean to, to confuse things, but once in a while that does happen. So yes, I guess the hybrid that I was talking about is adopting a new order that lifts the mask mandate on a date of your choosing, presumably the 12th of March, while at the same time recommending continued masking for those folks who feel it's necessary, who have an underlying health condition or feel it's necessary. There would be no mask mandate, just a recommendation that continues for those folks who wish to do so.
Okay, but we still have an expiring emergency order that we also need to deal with.
Well, that's, that's a whole different question, a whole different question. So if, if, if the board chooses to do nothing right now, which is certainly an option, our emergency declaration expires March 31st, at which time our indoor mask mandate would also expire. So whether you choose to extend the emergency declaration beyond March 31st is, is a different discussion. However, I suppose turning that point around, if you do nothing with the indoor mask mandate and extend Benton County's emergency declaration, that pulls along the indoor mask for as long as the emergency declaration lasts.
And that is not my intent. My, my real question is why would we issue an order to? Well, I guess we have to, if we want to go for a March 12th date in order to stay aligned with O H A, we'd have to issue an emergency, we'd have to issue an order. And then if the, and then we will have to address the emergency declaration also in, after that time. Okay, I'm, I'm clear now. It's just a little bit complicated and I'd love to do it all at once. I, I would just like to say that we've received a lot of letters about this topic. We only had a handful of people speak today. But everyone that did write in did express the desire to be able to make their own choices about whether to mask or not. And I, I share their, their feelings. But I also remain concerned about those vulnerable people that have very little choice because of compromised immune systems or age or underlying health conditions. So I just want to state that I want to make sure that in, in our efforts, if we choose to align with O H A, which I would recommend, we really address the needs of those vulnerable populations by keeping an eye on therapeutic availability at, at the local medical system by providing those KN 95 masks or N 95 masks to whichever vulnerable population groups need them, you know, group homes, long-term care facilities, supporting those people to the best of our ability. So, thank you. And I, so I'll just say that I feel like we should align with the state and match up our dates for the lifting of the masks at the same time as the state and change it from, or include, include the language of the recommendation. I think that's important. And I just want to highlight too, that this is, this is really the first opportunity that we have had to have this discussion since the state made their announcement last week. And I think the headline of the G T maybe led some people to assume that that's not the case. Maybe they read it thinking that we have already been having this conversation ongoing. So just wanted to clarify that. And I guess that's the most important thing for me is to just acknowledge that my job is not to say that I think I know more than, you know, all the experts at the state level. So I would like to see us align with them. And then Commissioner Malone, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Yeah, similar comments. While people were talking, I came up with, we have one community and we need to have one message. And it's, I appreciate the, our, the three speakers representing different parts of our communities, but saying very similar things. It, it makes no, no sense for Benton County to be out of alignment with O H A's state guidelines. So I think there, there might be a little confusion between the emergency declaration that expires at the end of the month and, and the mask mandate. But whatever we do today, I want it to be clear that we are, Benton County is aligned with state guidelines. And, and then I'll repeat what's been said, messaging. This is not every, not everybody's a healthy 25-year-old. And so different people will require different approaches and masks are optional and and, and need to be, like my umbrella image, you don't throw them away, just have them close by. COVID is been with us for two years and, and we've never quite known what's around the next corner. So I think vigilance and being careful needs to be part of our message. Align, align with the state on the mandatory masking, which would be in, in on March 12.
Can I clarify one question? I know we're not necessarily talking about the emergency declaration at this point. The reason for potentially extending it, is it because it qualifies us for additional money? Or am I making that up or misremembering that?
So I'll, I guess I can answer on the, the legal portion. And I presume April has an answer on the health front. The reasons why an emergency declaration would be extended would be to qualify us, yes, for additional available FEMA or state funds that accrue to counties or municipalities. who are in a state of emergency declaration. It loosens our contracting requirements, our meeting requirements, and some of the board chair's authority as it relates to making decisions around emergency topics. So those are the legal reasons and I suppose the financial reason for maintaining the emergency. And I'm not going to presume to get into the health, health reasons. I'll let April answer that half of the question.
Well, thank you, Vance. And my, my answer is actually the same as yours. It really has to do with funding for staffing and other pieces. We are waiting to hear from OHA if the FEMA contract with OHA will be extended beyond 331, as that's the current end date. We should expect this, this week to hear about that. And I, and I intend on inquiring whether a local declaration will be necessary for those counties since the state one will be expiring. Thanks.
Commissioners, Vance, I'd just like to interject real quick as well that we should also check in with Brian Lee, our emergency manager, just to make sure he doesn't have any issues or concerns or that he would like to express about extending it or keeping it in sync with the state. I think he'll likely say, let it expire at the end of this month in conjunction with the states. But I do think we need to give him and Sheriff Anarsdall the ability to weigh in on that as well.
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, if I understood you correctly, Vance, we can separate out Benton County's mask mandate from our emergency declaration. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And, and then you, you said, we can, today we can instruct staff to return with an order rescinding our mask mandate or saying that we're coordinating with the state timeline of ending mask mandates on March 12th.
Yes, yes, you can.
All right. Any other questions or comments? It sounds like all three commissioners are in alignment. Vance, do you need anything else from us? Or Joe, or April, do you need the other direction from us?
No, thank you so much for the discussion.
We need to make a motion.
You, you can, you don't have to. I can bring back, I can coordinate with April to bring back an order that will be placed on your agenda for next week that will lift the mask mandate effective, Steve, 11:59 PM on March, March 11th. And I place recommendations that those folks who are vulnerable have a need for masks, they, they continue to wear them as they, as they see fit. And I'll look to April for that language. So between the two of us, we'll bring a, an order back for next Tuesday's board meeting.
Suzanne?
I just want to say that I appreciate separating out the topic of the emergency declaration because I think we do need to fully understand all of the ramifications and not conflate that with the masking issue. One thing that's on my mind, and I'm sure it's on yours as well, is if that in any way adversely affects our ability to continue meeting the requirements of our equity plan and reaching out to underserved populations for vaccination and other kinds of services related to responding and recovering from COVID, that I would want us to seriously consider what that would mean for us. It could be that it will have no effect, but it sounds like we have yet to receive full information from the Oregon Health Authority and from others on what options may be available to us. And so I do appreciate separating that issue out and being able to come back with more information about that.
Thank you. And it sounds like we maybe don't have to have a motion, but Commissioner Ojero, if you are more comfortable making one, I don't see anything wrong with that.
I am fine with staff bringing an order back next Tuesday, although a motion probably would be clearer for our community. So I'm going to go ahead. I propose that staff come back to us with a order for our consideration at next Tuesday's board meeting that will align our mask mandate with that of the state, but also does include language about those who are most vulnerable continuing to mask as they feel appropriate in order to protect themselves and their loved ones.
Hold, hold a second, Pam.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries.
Commissioners, before you ended this conversation, I did want you to be aware that our COVID executive team is meeting tomorrow morning. And the purpose of that particular meeting is to focus on county operations and our own county facilities. And so we will be taking this information and having a dialogue surrounding our facilities. And if you have any insight or opinions you would like me to share with that group, I'd be happy to do so. So I just wanted to give you the opportunity to weigh in, weigh in on that if you'd like to.
I think that the thing for me is, is a mask mandate one day and not the next. And it, it's always going to be an arbitrary line because we have to make these things on, decisions on an official level, whether it's the state or county. And personally, I think that I trust our workforce to make judicious decisions. If I were in a small meeting room that had poor ventilation with a large group of people, I might choose to continue to wear my mask. So it's a, that's a difficult choice. And I look forward to hearing discussions that the executive committee hold.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate the discussion. Next up on the agenda, we have Nick Hirth with an update on the Justice System Improvement Program. Nick?
Commissioners. First, let me begin at kind of a high-level item, and that is that relative to JSEF, we've kind of reached a point where we need to implement some refinements to the management of JSEF. This is kind of an inevitable progression or an inevitable point in, in a program of this complexity. And, you know, I like to use a sailing analogy. You've charted a course, you have, you have your sails set and suddenly, you know, the wind starts to change or currents change, or maybe even you, you know, redirect the port that you're heading for. So this is nothing unusual and almost expected in a, in a long, complex project. One of the driving factors is when we went into pre-design, we weren't expecting to be in both pre-design and design concomitantly. And that has created some real challenges in terms of the scope of the current program. And it's not that it's scope creep, it's just that we have two phases now overlapping. So that's one of the driving factors. There are others. I want to stress that this is not any kind of overhaul. It's really a refinement, refinement of management structure, roles and responsibilities, some priorities. So not macro changes. And to that end, I'll be meeting with co-executive sponsors, Joe Kirby and Sheriff Dan Arzdale, Arzdale to start this process this afternoon. So you're getting this about as close to, as timely as possible, this update. Relative to hiring, I've been working very closely with Tammy Webb in HR relative to both the PIO and JSEF comms coordinators positions. We did interview a candidate last week. I'm queuing up another, an interview for another candidate soon. I don't have that scheduled yet. But at least we're making, we're making progress on that, on that front. Relative to the political strategist consulting firm, we're conducting interviews this week and expect a final decision next week. Probably early to midweek, hopefully. And then finally, relative to the owner's representative RFP, just as a reminder, those are due, this is owner's representative services relative to design and implementation of JSEF facilities. Those are, those responses are due March 7th. So we will be receiving those and then interviewing later in the month. So everything's moving forward relative to staffing. Final update concerns the Lumen property. Vance Cronie met with Lumen's attorney on this particular proposed purchase for about an hour and a half last week. The conversation has really shifted from a, you know, temporary off-site parking solutions to a permanent onsite solution. Of course, once the decision was made to locate the new courthouse on the the North Corvallis property, it really freed up space on the BOC block, even with a potential new crisis center there for parking to accommodate Lumen's needs as well as ours. So we've identified a number of options. Strategy is not to identify a single option, but to have a several that we may be able to implement over time and would be, you know, subject to actually getting into design of the block. So assuring Lumen that they will have a set number of spaces for their various vehicles, but not committing to an exact position or space at this current time and pending kind of design outcomes that, you know, could change the exact spot. Finally, Vance did strongly recommend and has requested that a Lumen employee or representative come on site. It's really difficult to use pictures and words to describe what we're proposing here. We feel that it would be much more expeditious, were Lumen to just put an asset on site. That's a great suggestion. Hoping to hear something soon on that front. And then finally, you know, with the, with the recent state allocation of 5.45 million to complete the crisis center, there is, you know, it would certainly be nice to close on the site as quickly as possible. However, that is not precluding us from moving forward with design, knowing or expecting a landing spot to be either the Lumen property or the North Corvallis site. So that's, that's my very short update this morning. Any questions, comments?
Commissioner Malone?
Thank you. Nick, kind of reading between the lines, we're still moving forward with Lumen. It's just ironing out some relatively minor details. Is that the accurate description?
I'm going to invite Vance to provide his assessment of the current situation. Not that I can't, but go ahead, Vance.
Commissioner Malone, from our perspective, these are indeed minor details. However, from Lumen's perspective, these are monumental hurdles that are both constructing and misunderstanding. The real challenge, and Nick has said it before, and I encountered it face-first last week, is that the people we've been talking to at Lumen just don't understand what's on the ground, how the operations function, what the traffic pattern is. I don't even think they understand where people park. When I talked with the attorney, she was concerned about how far away they had to park right now. And I, I had to tell her several times, your parking spot is right next to the building. So, yes, it's, you would think it would be simple. And if the property owner actually lived in town and we could meet them out there and walk through the onsite, I guarantee you, you would have had this thing done last summer. But the challenge is this multi, multinational corporation with no understanding of the onsite challenges, creating problems because they have very much a mindset of this is the way we've always done it. And that one size doesn't necessarily fit this project. So I'd love to say, I think we can get something done here in the next couple of months, but I, I'm not going to bet my house on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I definitely think you're on the right track, you know, getting onsite and second choice was, do they have a 3D printer and can we send them kind of a model and with little cars you can, trucks you can because it, it just sounds like we're talking about two different things and it's hard to agree when you're not talking about the same thing. So, but I would encourage more hour and a half conversations if we can move things forward here. This would be a nice, it's nice to get things firmed up. And so we, we have less fewer, fewer variables to deal with.
More hour and a half conversations? That'd kill me.
That's your job, Vance.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. That will move us along into our business meeting. And first up is the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve or to pull anything?
A move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And that brings us to proclamations. Our first one in the matter of proclaiming March 2022 Women's History Month with Johan.
Hello, our guest speaker isn't here yet. She was, that does seem closer to 11. So if you're able to wait a few minutes or do the other proclamation first, that'd be great.
Sure. Yep, we can go to the second proclamation in the matter of proclaiming March Red Cross Month. And we should have Benton County Red Cross volunteers, Sue Long and Alan Underkaulfer. And I probably mispronounced that last name.
That's okay. It's Alan Underkaulfer. And my understanding is that we're just going to read the proclamation. Is that correct? Great.
I believe so.
All right. So in times of crisis, people in Benton County come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by the American Red Cross Cascades Region volunteers and donors. In 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of the Red Cross volunteers here in Benton County who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. The Cascades Region, serving Oregon and Southwest Washington, the contributions of more than 2,500 local Red Cross the contributions of more than 2,500 local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. The Red Cross does so by providing more than 1,600 emergency overnight shelter stays, along with food and comfort for families devastated by more than 680 local disasters like home fires. Through the generosity of those donating more than 182,000 units of essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, or by supporting service members and veterans an average of eight times a day along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, and by helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. Their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back in our community. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that the month of March as Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Benton County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
I would move that we hereby proclaim March of 2022 Red Cross Month and encourage all to support the mission of this entity.
And I believe it's proclamation number 2022 day 002, and I will second the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Johanne, are you ready yet? Or, all right, perfect, I'll throw it over to you.
Excellent. Good morning, commissioners. I'm excited to have our Women's History Month proclamation being read by Kristen Perry, the director of Abby's House, the Center for Equity and Gender Justice at Western Oregon University. She's also a community member here in Benton County. So Kristen, take it away.
Hi, everyone. So sorry about that, I couldn't figure out my camera. So the 2022 National Women's History Month theme is women providing healing and promoting hope. Since 1980, the National Women's History Alliance, the NHWA, has helped lead the celebration of women's history every March. In 1987, National Women's History Month began being observed on an annual basis. The 2022 theme is both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic, and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. Healing and hope are critically needed for us throughout the country. The NHWA shares in their theme announcement the following. This year in particular, we are reminded of the importance of healers and caregivers who are helping to promote and sustain hope for the future. The NWHA encourages communities throughout the country to honor local women who bring and have historically brought these priceless gifts to their families, workplaces, and neighborhoods, and sometimes at a great sacrifice. These are the women who, as counselors and clerics, artists and teachers, doctors, nurses, mothers, and grandmothers, listen, ease suffering, restore dignity, and make decisions for our general as well as our personal welfare. Today, we honor the healing and hope the women in our communities have showcased throughout time. Women have and continue to face discrimination worldwide, including pay inequity, gender-based personal violence, and attacks on their reproductive rights. Transgender women, especially trans women of color, face the highest rate of violence nationwide and attacks on their personhood. Healing and hope helps us addressing these inequities and move towards a more just and equitable society. In order to do so, we need all Benton County community members to support the women in their lives, listen to their stories, and address the issues they are facing. Benton County is home to many wonderful women and girls who inspire us every day. One example is the story of Bonnie Hill. Bonnie was born in 1945 and moved to Oregon with her husband Tony Hill after meeting him during her time at Marquette University's nursing school. They lived in Eugene for a few years before moving to Alsey after they had their second child. Bonnie was a teacher at Alsey High School and involved in the community. She helped write a grant to fund the Alsey Rural Healthcare Clinic. Her community service and advocacy shifted after she had a miscarriage. Her classes from the University of Oregon taught her about a dioxin present in some herbicides at the time that had correlations with spontaneous miscarriages. Bonnie found that timber companies were using herbicides to kill hardwood trees competing with Douglas firs. She connected with other local women, and together they wrote letters to over 35 government officials nationwide urging them to take action. Her advocacy brought national attention to our small city of Alsey with the end result of the herbicide being banned. She helped address a major health issue impacting women and their families and provided hope for those in her community. She continued teaching, earning a Michael Milken Award for Outstanding Teaching in 1997. She helped write Oregon State Educational Standards for writing and retired in 2002. She then published the Alsey Valley Voice Community Newsletter. She passed away in January 2019. Her advocacy helped bring healing for her and other women in our community while having hope for a better future. Bonnie Hill joins many other Benton County women who have impacted their communities. Women continue to make a monumental impact in our work and lives throughout the county. From working to address housing insecurity, to supplying COVID-19 vaccinations, to teaching, running businesses, or supporting families, women have made a vital impact in our communities. Healing and hope is achieved through community collaboration. Benton County encourages all community members to reflect on our history and work towards a more equitable future for all women. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that March 2022 is Women's History Month in Benton County, and all community members are encouraged to join in this observance.
Thank you, Kristen. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, other than a couple typos in the acronym in the first, second line, and anyway, get those corrected before we send that out, transposing W and the H. But I'll move to proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month in Benton County, and that's proclamation 2022 day 003.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and I really appreciate the local content in this particular proclamation. It makes it much more meaningful.
Yeah, that was very interesting. I had not heard of Bonnie Hill before, so thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you, Kristen, for reading. Thanks for being here.
All right. Thank you all, and moving on to new business in the matter of a notice of intent to apply for grant monies for boardwalk restoration at Jackson Fraser Wetland and delegating authority for Director to sign. And we have Lynn McKee and Jesse up with us, welcome.
Morning, commissioners. I'm actually going to pass this on to Jesse because he's leading the work on this, so I will hand it over.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, so yeah, this morning, we're just coming to you commissioners to gain support and delegating authority to apply for the Oregon State Parks Local Government Grant Program. Our intent is to replace that obsolete boardwalk. It's become in disrepair over the years. It was built by volunteers over 25 years ago. And it's no longer truly ADA accessible. Never was really up to standards in the first place. And so it's really important for us to replace that old boardwalk. And, you know, and it's a big deal too, because this will really be the first the first big project in the Owens Farm Strategic Partnership, you know, connecting that whole area into the larger Owens Farm work plan that we've been working on, creating a really accessible site for everyone in our community. So we have enough in donations and funding to meet the match requirements. And so we're kind of going all in. The grant is due April 1st, so we're getting close. And getting support from our county commissioners is one of the requirements for applying for this grant. So we come to you today hoping that you will authorize the delegating authority for our director to sign the application to apply for the local government grant program.
All right, any comments, questions, or do I hear a motion? Commissioner Malone? Oh, it looks like, Pat, you froze on my screen at least.
Unfortunate timing. Thank you. We received a briefing from you about the prospect for this proposal a few weeks back. And I am grateful that it's moving forward and that since then amassed the matching funds needed. Looks like Pat's back, so I'll give him a chance to speak.
Yep, my computer wanted to have me stop talking, I guess. But this, I love the partnership and this fits right in there. Is this grant, when you were talking about the project before, you mentioned instead of wood, you might be looking for a more permanent. So we can't, we can't, do we still call it a boardwalk, Jesse? Or if it's concrete? But is that the plan to try to get sufficient funding to have at least some concrete in the path?
Yes, Commissioner, that's the goal. You know, we've been looking at it. There are a few options that are not wood. We'd like the wood, but one of our goals is to avoid, you know, having to rebuild it another 25 years. And so with a potential concrete boardwalk, we're still going through all the budgeting items and everything as we work through this. But that's our hope, is that we can construct the boardwalk out of materials that will last, you know, for a very, very long time. That's our goal.
And be ADA accessible and great. If there are not any more questions or comments, I would love to make the motion. I move to authorize Benton County Natural Areas, Parks, and Events to submit an application for the 2022 Park, Oregon Parks and Recreation Department Local Government Grant.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, get her done.
Thank you, commissioners, we're excited.
And how does the resolution fit into our actions this morning? It's on page 42.
It authorizes Lynn to be with the signatory on the grant.
That's correct.
So Pat, are you asking if we need to adopt it or move it?
Yes, I mean, is this, have we taken care of this with the motion?
Commissioner, I'll just go and weigh in. I would go ahead and suggest that you adopt the resolution that's in the packet.
I would be. Yeah, well, I'll move to adopt resolution number 2022 day 002 in the matter of authorizing Benton County Natural Areas, Parks, and Events to apply for a local government grant for the Oregon Wetland Boardwalk Reconstruction at Jackson Fraser Wetland Natural Area and delegating authority to the director to sign the application.
Second, a good catch, Pat.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Now get to work, Jesse.
Best of luck on that application. All right, that takes us to our next agenda topic in the matter of supporting the establishment of Juneteenth as an observed Benton County holiday. And we have Johanne and Tracy Martineau.
Good morning, commissioners. So at a recent goal-setting meeting, we met with you to discover what your interests were in considering adoption of Juneteenth as an observed county holiday for our employees and our organization. And hopefully, we've addressed that information that you requested in your board packet today. We'll just do a quick overview of the information that you have in your packet. Provided a little bit of background on the origins of the National Declaration of Juneteenth. Also included a list of the current observed county holidays. And in general, the county closes its business offices on these days of observance. And so should the board approve and adopt Juneteenth as an additional holiday, the county business offices would also be closed. And of course, this is with the exception of the sheriff's office and the law enforcement activities. One of the questions that you raised in the goal-setting meeting was any impact on collective bargaining agreements? And all of our collective bargaining agreements already have language that would address any additional holidays that the board should declare. You also had a question about any fiscal impact of adding Juneteenth as a holiday. And as our CFO explained, it doesn't actually have a fiscal impact to the budget. However, it does have an impact on the benefits that are given to county employees. And so the total cost, including a 35% roll-up for associated increases would be about 188,749,000. So Johanne and I also met in discussing not just the process of adopting Juneteenth as an observed holiday, but also the importance of the, and cultural significance, and importance of an education and communication plan. And so I'd invite Johanne to give you a preview of what we would recommend along those lines of educating and communicating this out to our employees and our organization. Johanne?
Yes, thank you. So Wes, Tracy and I were talking about the development of this. We really want to make sure that all of our employees are fully informed about Juneteenth and the impact that has. So our plan is to roll out a comprehensive training program about the history of Juneteenth and why we are celebrating this holiday. That will be primarily done through April and May and beginning of June, leading up to the holiday, and every employee will participate in this training. This is, this way, we are all informed of the experience about it. This is based off of the training that I provided as a diversity dialogue back last June, the day before the Juneteenth was declared a holiday. And we'll building upon that experience so that everyone's informed. Because this really is a crucial holiday, as we will share as we read off the resolution, it is super important that our staff members understand why this is. It's not just another holiday to just go and have a barbecue. It really is an important cultural piece and historical piece, and that cannot be erased, especially because this is actually going to be a major component to help us recruit and retain staff members of color, especially black staff members, because this is a really crucial event in history. And we need to acknowledge the nation's history of slavery and the celebration that comes with Juneteenth. So once we are done with discussion, we will read off the resolution, provide a little more context. But I'm building some training along the line. But I'm building some training along the lines. We'll start at the director's level, and then we'll move to different staff departments based on need. Create many opportunities for staff to get that training, including one-on-one opportunities if their schedules are not working with a large group setting. But we'll do whatever we need to do to get everyone trained. And then we'll provide additional trainings on a regular basis to cover this each year to celebrate the holiday. And I also encourage that we collaborate with organizations. This is the NLACP and the Oregon State University, so that we can celebrate their events happening and encourage our community members to spend Juneteenth with those holidays and events happening. Because it's really a major component of Juneteenth is that community collaboration and everything. So whether they do that on Juneteenth or around it, I think it's really important that we encourage our staff members to use the holiday to reflect, learn, and take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy and Johan. Tracy, did you want to add anything else?
I'd just invite any other questions that Commissioners might have in reaching a decision on this matter, or if there's any other information that you would like us to collect, just like to invite that now.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your work on this, and I appreciate the training component. I think the, yeah, the cultural and the historical, you know, educational component is a great idea. And I thank you for bringing back the information for us. I think seeing that dollar amount just highlights the importance of this. That is a big dollar amount. But this is important enough that it's worth it in my book, so I support this. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Malone?
Thank you, and I have similar comments to what you said, Commissioner Weiss, but that Johan, that this isn't just a moth, that this is an opportunity to go over some of our neglected history. And I'm glad that's going to be a strong emphasis in this holiday going, going forward. That it's an educational holiday, so looking forward to that.
Tracy?
Commissioners, I see some of our friends from FME Leadership are here also today. And I would also just share that this isn't just a great idea that management had. This was a concept that really bubbled up from our employees as well. And it was clear in our bargaining conversations that this was really important to our, to our employees.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, thank you for acknowledging that. Thank you, FME Leaders.
Do you have, okay, any further comments, Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we're ready for a motion.
I would recommend actually reading, I could read out the resolution beforehand. I think it's important that the public hear this resolution before it's declared.
Great, please do so.
All right. In the matter of supporting the establishment of Juneteenth as an observed Benton County holiday, whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the end of slavery, recognizing June 19th, 1865, the Major General Gordon Granger announced in Galveston, Texas, that the Civil War has ended and enslaved black people, were freed. And whereas the local celebration of June 19th a year later became known as Juneteenth and Freedom Day, the holiday spread nationwide and has passed through the descendants of freed black people. The date became highly revered in Texas decades later, with many free people and their descendants making annual visits to Galveston to celebrate. And whereas Juneteenth has become a national holiday of celebration and education, including parades, picnics, storytelling, guest speakers, religious services, and political activity. And whereas Oregon has black, had black exclusion laws that limited the rights of black people in Oregon, preventing them from working and living in the state. Oregon's exclusionary past and systemic racism has led to continued hardship, undue burden on Black Oregonians that is still present to this day. And whereas systemic racism throughout the country, including educational inequality, wealth inequity, the prison industrial complex, and other forms of systemic racism, all led to public outcry and introspection about the state of race relations in our country, community, and the need for improvements and progress in addressing racial inequity. And whereas responding to public outcry, many elected officials, activists, educators have called for more awareness for the contributions of African-Americans to our society and the naming of Juneteenth as observed public and government holiday to allow persons of all ethnicities and races to recognize the legacy of slavery and racism in our country and to celebrate all the positive accomplishments of African-Americans in the United States. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Joseph R. Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, making Juneteenth a federal holiday. And on June 19th, 2021, Oregon Governor Kate Brown signed the House Bill 2168 into law, making Juneteenth a state holiday. And whereas Benton County wishes to follow our federal and state leaders and recognize Juneteenth as part of the 2040 Native Communities Initiative based on the principles of equity and health. And whereas Benton County government recognizes Juneteenth to be a day of reflection and of race relations in the country and stress the importance of racial parity, equity, and justice. Now therefore be it resolved that the Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the naming of Juneteenth as an annual observed Benton County government holiday and encourages all staff and community members to participate in celebration, education, reflection, and community events. Thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion? Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, I have a question in our packet. It talks about a work session motion. Have, is that where we start? Because we're now in.
Commissioner, we can go directly to the resolution itself, and that's my belief. I just want to confirm that with Tracy real quick.
Yes, I agree. We can move right to the decision.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll move to adopt the Resolution 2022 Day 003 to add Juneteenth to the list of county observed holidays.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion made in second. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Johan, and thank you, Tracy, and thank you to everyone who prioritized this and, and asked for it. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, thank you very much.
Just a final comment. Appreciate Johan talking about helping with recruiting to the Benton County family. And I hadn't thought of that aspect. And I also like a coordinated message, just like when we were talking about masks on the last topic that to align Benton County with the state and federal. I think it is a good thing, so appreciate all the effort to put this across the finish line.
All right, thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, 7.3 in the matter of declaring the necessity and purpose for acquisition of real property locating a justice system campus. And Vance, you are up.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. This is the resolution that would essentially be a preliminary requirement to filing an eminent domain proceeding to acquire property currently owned by McFadden Ranch LLC. The statute or 35.235 requires the governing body, in this case Benton County Board of Commissioners, to declare through a resolution or an ordinance a public necessity behind pursuing eminent domain of the property. That's exactly what this resolution does. It describes the need for the criminal justice system, lays out the elements, it lays out the suitability of this property to accommodate all of those components. It also describes the efforts that were made to acquire the property that were, have been unsuccessful. In short, this informs both the public and the court should we end up filing for eminent domain of the public need for the property currently owned by McFadden Ranch LLC. While this is not necessarily the first step of litigation toward, for eminent domain, it is a required step. We cannot move forward unless this resolution has been adopted by the Benton County Board of Commissioners. So I don't think there's any need to belabor this anymore. The agenda checklist lays out the history that has gotten us to this point with this piece of property. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Right, questions or comments for Vance? Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, I think it's important to emphasize that we're on a, we're starting on a two-track process. Negotiations are still our preferred path forward. But after, I think, over a year of off and on negotiations, we haven't made sufficient progress to put all our eggs in the negotiating basket. And so we're starting a second track. Is that accurate, Vance?
It is. Without taking the step to declare, to adopt the resolution in necessity, you don't have the option of eminent domain.
Commissioner Ojro?
Thank you. I would also like to state that this is not a decision that any of us take lightly. We've been discussing this for a long time. And the first person to raise the issue of eminent domain was actually the owner of McFadden Ranch LLC. The, and I want to point out to folks that may be listening that this is a structured process to reach a negotiated price for a property. And as county commissioners, we firmly believe that this is the best location for our justice system facilities after a long review of all the properties available and an extensive public process. However, we have to make decisions that are fiscally responsible for our taxpayers as well. So the eminent domain process, as laid out in Oregon statute, allows us to work in a very systematic way with the support of the courts to have a jury make that final determination of price, selling price. So it's again, a decision that none of us take lightly. But we also know that we really need these facilities, and we want them in one place as a campus so that they can be as cost-effective and efficient as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, and I very much agree with what has been said. Commissioner Malone?
In some of our conversations with community members, we're taking, has been used. And I think that's inaccurate and appreciate mixed bullet points of laying out what the eminent domain process is. And we need to work at getting, getting these points out. It's a complicated process that most people, almost everybody, is not familiar with. So I think the language and the communication is critical to this process going forward. But one of the first things we should work on, work on is we're buying it at a price that hopefully will be determined by negotiations between the two parties. But if that fails, then the price is set by kind of judge and jury and appraisals. And so, but just the educational component is, is critical on this process.
So I just like to clarify a couple of points. First, I think all three of the Commissioners have alluded to and acknowledged that initiating eminent domain proceedings does not preclude negotiating a purchase. And as been said repeatedly, we continue to hope and push the idea that we will be able to engage the property owner and negotiate a purchase of the property, even though we may move forward with the eminent domain proceeding. However, eminent domain proceeding, and I think this is important to clarify, if we are unable to reach a negotiated purchase, then technically Benton County, the government, would be taking McFadden Ranch property. However, in the eminent domain proceeding, the government is permitted to take private property as long as it pays just compensation. So just, just know that while the terms are being thrown out, I think maybe in the community a little bit haphazardly, technically, if there is no negotiated purchase, the county would be seeking to take the property and would be told by a jury how much we must pay for the ability to take that property.
And that price is based on fair market value and what, what the appraisals say, and so it is a fair process that we're not very familiar with in Benton County, but is used. It's fairly commonly in jurisdictions.
Well, you know, not to make light of it, Commissioner Malone, but I suppose at the outcome, at the, the outcome, whether it's a fair price, one side is going to agree with that statement, one side is not going to agree. But yes, ultimately, it's for the jury to decide what is fair compensation to the property owner that the government has to pay.
All right, any further comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2022 Day 001, Resolution of Necessity.
Second. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Vance, do we need to read the resolution?
You do not. No.
All right, great, thank you. Any other, anything else on this agenda item before we move on? Seeing none. I'm really just stalling for time to get my agenda back up. Okay, here we go. That brings us to old business in the matter of a second reading amending Benton County Code, Chapter 36, Illicit Non-Storm Water Discharges, Ordinance 2022-0308. And we should have Gordon Kurtz with Public Works with us and Greg Verret with Community Development. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Verret, Community Development. So just to recap, the board held a public hearing on February 15th on this ordinance amending Chapter 36 of the Benton County Code. There was no public testimony and no changes were made to the ordinance at that hearing. So it is back before you for a second reading and potential adoption. Do you have any questions or any additional information we can provide?
Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. Do I hear a motion?
I would move that, oh, sorry. Pat, if you have it up, go ahead. I thought I had it, but I don't.
Yeah, I will. I will move that we approve the matter amending Benton County Code, Chapter 36, Illicit Non-Stormwater Discharges, Ordinance Number 2022 Day 0308.
And conduct the second reading of the ordinance?
That sounds like a good idea.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes.
All right, second reading is, "Before the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending Benton County Code, Chapter 36, Illicit Non-Stormwater Discharges, Ordinance Number 2022-0308, now therefore the Benton County Board of Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows. Part One, Short Title: Amendments to Chapter 36 of the Benton County Code Requiring Illicit Non-Stormwater Discharges." And this ordinance will become effective 30 days from today, which would be March 31st.
All right, thank you. Does that--
Thank you, Commissioners.
Does that conclude this? All tied up, all good to go?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day. And that brings us to other on the agenda. Is there any other to consider? Hearing none. And just to confirm, we are not having an executive session. And we do have some business with service districts to get to. So first, let's see, I'd like to take a short break. So Vance, I adjourn this meeting?
That's correct. You can take, adjourn this meeting, and we can come back in however long you need. And then we will convene and adjourn each of the successive services.
Okay, perfect. So I will adjourn this meeting at 11:28 a.m., and we will come back at 11:35. All right, we are all here, so I will open the Alpine County Service District Governing Board Meeting at 11:36 a.m. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none. That takes us to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve or pull anything?
I'll second, Pat.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Which takes us to other, is there any other? Hearing none, I will close the meeting at 11:36 a.m. And next, we will move to Cascade View County Service District Governing Board Meeting. I'll open the meeting at 11:37 a.m. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the Cascade View County Service District Governing Board.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other? Hearing none, I will close the meeting at 11:37 a.m. And that will take us to Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board. I'll open the meeting at 11:38 a.m. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar for the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other business? Seeing none, I will close the meeting at 11:38 a.m. And that will take us to South Third County Service District Governing Board. I'll open the meeting at 11:38 a.m. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the South Third County Service District Governing Board.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any other business? Hearing none, I will close the meeting at 11:39 a.m. And is that, that looks like all of them.
Hmm.
All right.
The fastest, the fastest meetings you've ever done.
All right, well, thank you so much, everyone.
What man. What man.
Two minutes. Bob Speaker got through seven in two minutes.
Two minutes.
Impressive.
Well, thank you. The only thing I would say, this is harder and harder to get volunteers for these committees. I send out call for applications, and as you can see, Alpine has only one member now, I mean--
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, well, I think of the Dunbeck Water District that I think is larger than any of these, and there probably was several volunteers for the board through the years and just kind of beaters out and left to one person, and then that one person says, well, I can't keep doing this. So I appreciate you bringing that up because it's a common problem with any small volunteer organization. But this has some legal requirements. So I guess keep us posted on how recruiting is going or if there's anything the board can do to help that process.
I appreciate that. You know, it's just, you ask, and we don't ask a lot from them. It's basically the budget meeting. That's the only thing. There's not a lot going on right now. But we'll just, as long as one of you three are around, you're the governing board, we can still get stuff passed. So that's it.
All right. Well, thank you, and we are adjourned. Oh, Vance?
I just, and I just want to, just on a related note, just so that you guys understand the breadth of the scope of that problem that Pat was alluding to, it's not just our service districts where we're having challenges finding people. A lot of these smaller special districts, road districts, fire districts, are having the same problems. And there are legal ramifications for these boards not being able to function, one of which is, in some cases, we end up having to step in. So just know that it's not a problem that is going to not sit on our front doorstep at some point in time. Unfortunately, but it is.
All right. Well, thank you so much, everyone, for your time today. Have a wonderful day and go enjoy some lunch. Bye-bye.